I'd like to call where the Bureau of Crime Board of Commissioners work session for Wednesday, March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. Review of discussion meeting minutes. Department head report. You have some.
Well, I have Pat here, so I'll let someone else do it.
Anyone else have anything? Marley?
Community Development is the responsible entity for HUD and we're doing environmental reviews for two projects that are happening in the county. One being a park in Alacook and the other is installation of wealth and equipment at the Botec building in Central Towne. Secondly, or if I've said only two so far, we're anticipating getting another one from the planning department on Broadhead Road. Creating a duration. It's clear responsibility for doing environmental reviews. And secondly, I was invited to participate in a housing summit in Pittsburgh that was held by the Land or Urban Land Institute. The idea being to discuss barriers to affordable housing in Western Pennsylvania. And what type of activities could possibly overcome those barriers? And the ideas that the Land Institute is going to kind of condense these ideas, see which ones may be able to be handled legislatively. And present these ideas in Harris for possible legislative solutions. But the good part of it is I reconnected with the fellow that I used to work with in Alachica County. And you reached out to me yesterday with a proposed development project that we'd like to do here in the county. So we're gonna be meeting with him tomorrow at the meeting room. And if somebody comes up, it's something that's a good mix for. See if you can let you guys know.
Yes, so thank you. I just saw where a new emergency women's shelter opened in Pittsburgh, too. I don't know if you got, not set out for we do the email we just got. They were kind of introducing themselves. It's it's in Pittsburgh, but as we know, those shelters sometimes can get pretty full.
Wonderful, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Tony?
First, I brought Kevin Tossick to talk a little bit about a project that he knew about you guys a couple of weeks ago regarding AT&amp;T boosters. The first phase of it is we installed boost, internal boosters to help cell phone service of AT&amp;T users inside the arena. Ice Arena, so there's improved service there. The next portion of the project is AT&amp;T approached us doing an external booster off the lodge. Which the radius would extend from each end of the park and increase service for AT&amp;T users in that park. They would be hanging it, they're attaching it to the side of the lodge. They would require some hair, they have a closet in there for some parkour stuff. For internal, but there would be no costs to the county. They would set up their meter to pay the electric as well. We would just need your approval or. To to move forward to them attaching the building and I guess Kevin was talking a little bit about it.
The external is a is a permanent fixture?
A permanent fixture. Yeah, we're we're hoping with this, it might see other cell phone companies as well to do similar places throughout the county, or throughout the valley there, excuse me.
So there's no shared use is what you're saying?
No, even the building here, we have AT&amp;T, we have Verizon, we have the building to boost signal downstairs where there's all concrete walls. Verizon came in first and then shortly after AT&amp;T came and they put similar things in there. Down there, we approached AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, nobody had a solution. They're looking at putting actual towers somewhere on county property.
Right.
The way that topography is, even when you have a tower on the hill, you can't cover all the turns. So the best thing, the best idea is to put something in the lodge, put a mast up and shoot both directions. And AT&amp;T has found some federal funding, they are the first company. So they have federal funding to do this and no charge in the county. All they're asking for is a little bit of rack space and put a rack in that little secure closet. They offered to put a deduct meter, said they will pay their electric and they'll even put a little heat vent heater in there to keep that room conditioned. Somewhere in the winter time, all charged to them.
Well, full disclosure, as an AT&amp;T customer, I highly support this initiative.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, Kevin put us in contact with T-Mobile, so for some of the large scale events as well, we had like the Mason's Surf Festival.
Right, I think they had something down there.
Comes down with hot spots and things like that.
With a trockety.
Some of the larger scale events, so our anticipation is once the AT&amp;T gets connected with other companies, make all those suits up. Encouraged service throughout.
For the AT&amp;T?
Throughout.
Sounds good to me.
As long as, Garan, no issues?
Okay, yeah, we're gonna have a walk through Friday, just to see the grounds again, like a walk through a couple of weeks ago, but now. We supply more footy statistics where it would be free to charge for us and.
Sounds good, thank you. Looks like you're up.
Good morning, I just have a couple of questions, some of the things that was asked to work on, see if maybe any decisions have been made or where we're at with them. First of all, I know, you know, I've met with Leonard Smith and Sol Ray several occasions about the engineering for the possibility of rehabbing parking garage. I haven't heard anything from them and I know sometimes they send communications directly to the Commissioner's office.
I haven't received it. We could reach out to them if you'd like us to.
Well, I can do that, too.
Okay.
We can reach out, I just wanted to see if any.
Yeah, we haven't had any.
I'll reach out to them.
Is the point of contact for that, is that Ned or would it be one of the other engineers then?
Ned, Ned is the point of contact.
Okay.
The other thing is, you know, provided some information for the seven ponds of Braden's Run. That's also through what it's the Sol Ray. That's John Heil, that's a different point of contact. Just wanted to see if there was any decision or any conversations about that, move forward with it or. If the Commissioners have a desire or pursuit out of that.
But is is that a compliance issue? I mean, are we out of compliance with any permitting that went with that? How does that work? I'm not.
What what I was told.
Well versed in.
What I was told was, you know, we we were issued permitting to do upkeep to those silos. But apparently, the new regime that's in there now said that the permitting that was given shouldn't have been given in the first place, a wrong permit. So they want the right permits.
Penta versus DEP?
That is all DEP.
All DEP.
It's all DEP, Conservation District, things of that nature.
The wrong permits that we got, how long did they last?
I don't know, I don't know.
That's all I'm asking, I don't know.
The proposal that Leonard Smith and Sol Ray provided to us was, you know, was contentious. So one of the, one of the larger members was contention on the permitting. Well, yeah, with the fact that it's Alachica, we've already learned that they're making us do these permits. They said the permit that we have, it's not loose, it's the wrong one, they're gonna make us do these things on the permits. So it's 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 large number, seventy nine thousand.
Oh, yes, we we did it once before, the last seventeen years that I know. Because we had an issue with the Beaver, it was a Beaver family in there.
Would it be beneficial for us to set a meeting up with Leonard Smith or to discuss the whole thing?
We could do that, I can set that up.
Yeah, I can.
I I I mean, I've walked back there, I've seen, I was back there with you guys and clearly, we've got issues with sediment, the islands. Building up in in the stream.
We cleaned the lake and cleaned the sediment ponds, but that was a while ago.
What I understand of it, the sediment ponds are the place to keep us from having to do the lake again.
Right.
I I probably, I know it's two different point of contacts, but maybe schedule something for the parking garage as well. Yeah, I mean, I know, they could both come, but we'll just have two separate conversations, just to, you know, because when they came the first time, they did a. They they walked the parking garage and looked for.
They walked the parking garage, they brought a contractor in to actually work on the parking garage, whatever it's been being built. And they found some.
Some, some. Yeah. Okay.
The other thing that I have was approached last week, I guess there was a request from someone coming into the courthouse for. Handicap access to the automatic push buttons for the.
Ice Arena.
Now here.
Over here as well, okay, because we had the one for the ice arena.
Yeah, I just, I, I just reached out to Dana and sent her quotes for natural for safety.
We're stealing that money. For here, you gotta find your own.
I got a. And I also reached out to Dana and she she said that there, you know, because of other departments that had put in for the P Corps to save the grant as well. That they, there would probably be some funding available to help out with that, but we would have to come up with some funding as well.
But can we, did you guys use the same, did you guys use the same company?
Yeah, as far as the, I forget.
Can you get together, just, so there was a, several people mentioned to Kelly at the front about the doors are kind of heavy. Now, the sheriffs do a good job of trying to pay attention to some ways.
Somebody.
Yeah, but they asked why we don't have any sort of push buttons.
Good question.
So.
So so not only these doors, but the door in the back?
Well.
For the handicap.
The one in the basement, yeah, yeah, not the top, but the basement one, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, can you get with Tony?
And the last thing that I have, we had talked a few weeks ago about a card reader for the fuel. And I believe the controller's office.
She's probably a little bit. How much fuel, remember we talked about that? It's okay, it's alright. I, we tried to pull up Brittany, Nikki, and Echo, we we pulled it up. It's it's pretty, I want to say convoluted on that credit card, did you, have you ever looked at it before? Yeah, but it it even though the the fuel one that they use, it's just, it's it's. I'm guessing the sheriffs probably, when they are to return the car, they're probably to top it off or fill it up. Because like one day, somebody will put like three gallons of gas and. Another day, somebody will put fifteen gallons of gas, it's just, it's it's very. Yeah, sorry.
The last, the last thing that I have is, it's it's some personnel things that I will be reaching out to your office and Tammy's office as well, a couple of things. Very much.
Any other department head report? Solicitor?
The mail-in ballots are going to be heading out from the Elections Bureau. I do want to point out, we mentioned this, I think previously, but if we not, we didn't. For the the specific Senate, Senate races, so the US Senate races, there's going to be two candidates on each Republican and the Democrat ballot. Only one of those individuals should technically be on the ballot. The timing of this, the way it worked out, we had to get our ballots printed. And between the time that we okayed the ballots to be printed, the courts came down with the rolling, removing two individuals out of the races. So anyone who gets a mail-in ballot, what you're gonna do is you're gonna see inserted in the mail-in ballot is a piece of paper. Specifically stating that those two candidates, even though they're on the ballot, if you want to vote for them, the only way to vote for them will count will be to write them in, because they should not be on the ballot. We're gonna also have at the polls posted, literature saying the same thing, because again, we've already printed the ballots, we can't go back and redo it. Specifically identifying the races that those candidates are in and saying that a vote cast for those individuals will not be counted unless it's done as a way. So putting that message out there, we will continue to put this message out there of all the voters here over the next month. But unfortunately, with the timing and with the, when we needed to get the ballots printed and the decision from the courts, it just didn't allow us to hold off on printing the ballots. We didn't know when the decision from the courts would come. The two individuals who will be on the ballot, just for everyone's references, were Cormick and Casey, those were the two, those were the two who will be on the ballot. Nineteen resolutions for tomorrow. Couple of the highlights, the farmer's market is asking again to utilize the parking lot back behind the courthouse for for the farmer's market now through December. Number six is the CBA, this is, this is with the department, excuse me, the deputy sheriffs. This is just the collective bargaining agreement, we've already gone to arbitration on this, going through arbitration, you then have to implement everything into the collective bargaining agreement. That's been done, it's been signed off by everyone, so this is the actual agreement that was obtained through, through the arbitration. Seven is the Porter Johns contract to deal with parks. Eight is a paving bid for Winmer to look at various paving projects in the county. Eleven and sixteen, Director Landrum mentioned, this is a study for a playground in Alacook along with community gardens designs. And then the rehab of old park in Beaver Falls. Eighteen is for the library con event to be held at CCDC in October. And then nineteen, this is what our tourism has done, there's various grants that they're putting out to local communities to utilize for tourism projects. This first round is for Chippewa, Beaver Falls, and Ambridge for various proposals that they submitted to utilize tourism dollars. Unless there's any question on those resolutions or anything else, I do need an executive session to talk about personnel matters.
Number eight, Dan Winmer, that's the paving lot, is that to prepare the bid to go out?
Yes.
When do we see the bid going out? When 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 are we gonna put that bid out for our spring paving projects, I guess you could say? Okay, and then we'll, you'll go with Wayne, we'll put it out.
Yeah, I I actually have an issue with number eight. Because one of those projects listed, the the resolution says county property. But the seventh item listed on there says the old Times newspaper building.
That that will be, that will be as an addendum, that's something that we want to move forward with, we can, we can, we can niche that.
I, as far as I know, we don't own the Times building or the parking lot, and I don't know why the resolution would state that. You know, admittedly opposed to the whole Times building issue, so, yeah. I don't think it's a good, good idea, good use.
We could review, we could remove that, that's no problem. There's no way to, I mean, it's just because we don't own the property, it can't, if if we're in the process of looking at, to try and tie it on, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we could, you could get.
Pricing.
You could get pricing, but we wouldn't be able to award that because we don't have the property.
Okay.
I'm opposed to even getting pricing for a building that's, we're talking about purchasing, which I also think is a bad idea, bad use of taxpayer money. Not a good fit. Was an investment in our future, but we could have that debate.
No, we got.
Ongoing, but but the.
We could discuss that.
Shouldn't be. I I don't know why we would do anything for a parking lot that's still in private hands, right?
Well, I don't think we're doing anything for the parking lot, we're looking for a price for if we were to move forward purchasing the building that we have openly discussed, we have had meetings there. Since it was brought up, we could discuss it here today. You don't have to say why you're opposed to it, it's not a, here nor there. I don't see any other property in the county. That is. Good for the use that we need, I could be wrong. We could, we could continue looking and I think we're going to, we did put the. The, what is it, the appraisal out?
There was an appraisal that was done that we're required to do.
By law.
Verifying the value of the property. Anytime that a municipality goes to purchase property, there has to be an appraisal done to verify that the property you're purchasing for is worth at least that amount of money. That was authorized, that was done on this particular piece of property.
So we'll be waiting to hear back from that, but I mean, I think at some point, we have to start to really pin down what our future is with the mines and the storage, et cetera.
And that appraiser, the store that third party won, how did we pick that person, this individual?
That was a recommendation from, I think, the assessment.
Yeah, we we reached out to the assessment office, we asked them for recommendations for an appraiser.
Where were they out of? I I don't know who it is. I don't even know the name, what was it?
I forget, it caught my head, too.
Yeah.
So the assessment office recommended that?
We could, we could have had the assessment office do it, but we weren't comfortable having the assessment office do it under the circumstances. So we went out and and chose a neutral.
Based on representation from the assessment office?
Correct.
They told us basically.
Yeah, I I just, I mean, the contract, I know.
It just seems like, to me, it's a conflict, so we have, so we have.
Well, 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 the other.
I was talking about like.
Yeah, I'm saying, the law allowed us to use the assessment office.
We chose not to.
We we weren't comfortable with that under the circumstances. So at that point, we had to get, we can get any any appraiser that is out there. There's not a lot of appraisers that do commercial buildings like that. Obviously, the assessment office deals with individuals or companies that do this stuff. So we asked them for an individual who could possibly do it.
And Ed Klein appraisers of the commercial boxes, properties, are they commercial properties?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
You said under the circumstances, why aren't you comfortable with the assessment office doing this, the appraiser?
Because one of, one of the owners of the building is the solicitor who's handling the assessment appeals. And 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 one of the other owners is the former chief county solicitor, or excuse me, chief county assessor.
Assess the property three million.
At Tyler Technologies Assessor.
Yeah, yeah.
With his consultants, he consulted, that's why we hired that prior chief assessor, plus the commercial properties on Tyler, and they created the commercial properties for.
I'll be, I'm, I'm. It was assessed through the.
The same year that we bought it for sixty seven, six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Same.
I I I'm lost, I don't know what you're talking about, it's for.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could, I mean, I don't think you have to beat around the bush, you could say what you want to say.
So so last year, the property was bought for six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, that's market value. Six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars was bought in twenty twenty three, that same year our assessment office, Tyler, actually the year four, assessed for three million dollars. Because they said that was market value. There's a little bit of a discrepancy there. And the same people are all involved in this, were involved helping reassess it at three million. There's just a lot of.
So would it be beneficial?
Parties that are on it, and they also recommended the.
Would you recommend, I mean, I I have no problem.
I would like someone that the assessment office does not recommend as an appraiser to confirm that their appraisal was correct in the year that they bought it for six seventy five and they appraised it at three million. And it was a lot of conflict.
So how would you like, how would you recommend this board, if we were to move forward, to go out, get another, use Ed Klein, if that's who you're recommending, use Ed Klein.
If they do commercial, why don't we?
So if Ed Klein comes back and says, yes, it's worth that, are you okay with?
If it's a fair party, then it's not going to be recommended from the people involved in selling this to you.
They might have recommended Ed Klein, too, it might be who we chose, I'm not sure, it was, it was done through a lot of, I mean, we could.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't, I don't recall the name off the top of my head.
And it would be nice to see what's the total cost of the county, there's like two million dollars in the pits in there, there's employees we have to employ.
I don't think we'd have to employ any employees, but I mean, no, I agree with you.
Before we purchase, it would be nice for the county and the pastors to know, what's the total cost going to be?
It's no different than the Discovery Center, correct? And and we haven't done anything with that, but we spent millions of dollars, almost a million dollars. I I understand, what what I, we need to focus on over the next couple of years is finding a place for those mines and for the other stuff that we're running out of areas. Anyone could go down to Dan Coolville's garage and see. There's not enough room for him.
And you have ESU, you have equipment, there's a whole bunch of things.
We have that, we have ESU equipment that we were going to, we we looked at building a garage in Ambridge, it was going to cost five million dollars to do, we we chose not to. And now all that was going to do was just move a couple units from the hazmat garage over to Ambridge, that wasn't, so.
But we could have built a pole building in Ambridge for a couple of hundred thousand dollars, much like the one in Chippewa.
But that does not solve the the big picture issue.
Right, but but the three things that we plan on putting into the Times building, there are solutions for those that I think are much better solutions and benefits to the taxpayer.
And what are they?
Than by, well, if you build a pole building on the property that we already have sewn, and through the planning in Ambridge. You move the stuff out of Fosston, we can move right across the street, we can take the voting machines, put them back over into the Fosston garage.
I don't think the Fosston garage is set for that, that would only, that would be set for the hazmat, that would be set for either the hazmat or ESU equipment, not for the, not for the, I think it's what? Twelve thousand square foot of equipment that they need. So there needs to be something that that's discussed and, and, you know, I think we have to. I understand the the optics and if if it makes more people comfortable on going to get another appraisal and if it comes back. You know, I guess it comes back also, what if that appraisal comes back at three point five or four million dollars? I'm not saying it's going to, but what if it does? Then then what do we do?
It's an even worse decision. Plus, I I don't like the idea of ESU using the Times building on a quiet neighborhood street.
Have you ever been to, have you, have you ever been to a, I mean, talk to Pat, I've never been there, but have you ever been to when the ESU gets called out? Their their procedures on leaving the hazmat garage?
I've never been there.
Neither have I, neither have I, but from what I'm being told is they don't go out guns blazing screaming, they pull out like a normal car and leave.
And I'm saying that the Times really could be it, me being a man, I would like to see a more. A more fair for the appraisal thing because of parties for optics. And a more financial outline and all the different things we like to put into the long-term financial projection, not before we go ahead and sign papers, that's just me asking.
I don't think we're signing any papers anytime soon.
I'm just asking, I'm not saying that it's not the best thing, it's a few of all the different things, but I just feel like we haven't done the numbers and there are just too many connected parties that we, for optics, should. Be very clear, transparent on who's doing it so that we know that we're getting fair numbers.
Yeah, I I have no issue with going out and and seeking another appraisal, Garan, I don't know what your, what your thought is on that.
There's nothing illegal about that, again, we have two options, option one, actually, we have three options, one, not only are we comfortable, we're just getting a real estate agent to do it.
Yeah, we could get a.
We could get a real estate agent to do it, we'd be comfortable doing that, two is using the assessment office and three is getting a certified appraiser.
When we see the appraisers come, I mean, I understand what you're saying, you know, through the reassessment process, we see where our appraiser that we have go out. Appraises a property for four million dollars, a commercial property, and then the owner of that property gets an appraisal for. One point five million dollars, and then the court's split in the middle, I'll tell you, it just happened. Shadow Lakes Golf Courts Country Club was appraised for, we, I think our values, almost four million dollars, he got an appraisal for one point six. I said, we'll buy it for one point six as a county asset, I mean, but, you know, everyone always says stuff like that, but, you know, so I understand, so if, I mean, if. I I'm okay with, if if the board wants to continue to look at that property, I'm okay with getting three appraisals if that would make.
I know there's a cost to it, too.
Yeah, but surprisingly is.
Yeah, it wasn't as bad.
Surprisingly, it was only, I think, eighteen hundred dollars will be approved for that, that commercial appraisal.
Can we look at the signed contract then, and what we're paying for appraisals for the commercial side to reassess?
Yeah, this this is, this is a little bit, this is like to get a valuation, then then what it would be, have to be for in court. I mean, the other thing I would say is. Who are we going to determine to do or to be this other appraisal? I mean, whenever you look for something, you're generally going to go to the office of who handles that for input on on what they say to be an appraiser.
Yeah, unfortunately, many things that are just in the office are involved in this and are involved in the reassessment, so that makes it very easy. I mean, there are appraisal companies out there, you can look online, who does commercial appraisals, and there are some of them in the county, I mean, it's, you look online, it's not like it's.
Again, I mean, again, there's nothing illegal about it, you can get another one. If that's the route.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at, I mean, I guess the lot, I mean, not to put more in the lot department, but would you be willing to look for other commercial appraisals?
Certainly, or someone else, if you want to, I'm not, I don't want to put you in the spot, but like, you know, my first thought is, all right, if I need an appraisal, I'm going to find out who's who's someone who does appraisal. I'm calling the assessment office, who's generally the people who you see coming in to do appraisals? I could go online and look, but I I don't know who exactly is making the call to determine that this appraisal also is. Independent from any type of. Purview or recommendations from the assessment office.
I I'm, I'm okay, if the board is going to continue to look for spaces, a space, and this is a potential one, then, I I mean. I, my only thing is, I don't think you can. Fault someone for purchasing something and then turning around and asking what the fair, I understand where you're saying where the fair market value comes from.
We could have bought last year for six seventy five.
We didn't even notice for sale for six seventy five. I I didn't notice for sale from that company, they didn't have a for sale sign that I knew of. I I know whenever the church down here in Beaver was for sale, I was, this is, I think, the treasurer, I think you were still Commissioner, the the church down by Wayne Park. We said we should look at that because we were talking about moving, and then Beaver supposedly was looking at it, and then it is sold to another church. You know, that building I didn't know was for sale, I know the Wright building, from what I, my knowledge, down on fifty one is six, whatever that road is.
All the way up, yeah.
It's supposedly not for sale, it's only for rent. In, so. Any other questions on the resolutions, solicitor?
Well, I just wondered, from where does that money come from first? Are you taking out of the treasury or you're getting a loan?
It would be from the general fund.
Okay. Well, I just think the same, like, whenever I need to get, find out what my, my property is worth, I, I was getting a loan in the bank, I don't know what it was. But there are loans to pay. So if you're not taking a loan, then that's me.
So, so two things, one, can we just get your name for, for? Where do you reside, I'm sorry?
Ohio.
Okay, that was for the minutes. The county is a little bit different in, in what we're required to do whenever we purchase property than what a, a private individual would do. So, yeah, I, I, I think where it's at right now, we'll, I think, continue to have the conversation if this building is, is worthwhile or fits the need of the county. The, the one thing that's sort of been left out here that, that maybe people from the public aren't completely aware of, the county has a contract where they store their documents at, at mines in Louisville. That contract expires in a little over two years. So we've got to determine, I, I, the consensus, I believe, from the vast majority of the partner heads, due to the expense and the inconvenience, we do not want to renew that lease. So if we don't renew that lease, then we need to find some place to store all the documents that the various office, offices are required by law to store. So that, that's sort of what is moving this forward, knowing that, that is at the, 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 there's a reckoning to come here with, we've got boxes and boxes of documents through the years, that we need to find someplace to store those items. And that is sort of what is forcing this path down, a decision to be made on, on what are we going to do, knowing we have a little bit over two years to make that decision.
So this is for storing the documents?
Well, that, that's definitely one of them. I think the next question is, are there other things you want to do with the building or not?
It would be storage of documents, uh, storage of election equipment, all the election equipment. The E S U, our emergency service unit is looking for more space because they've outgrown their space. So there's a multitude of things that, that are looking at this forty thousand square foot building.
Can I get the information of how much it costs the county to store something in the mines?
I mean. Yeah, so we could get an exact number, but it's between two hundred and forty and three hundred thousand dollars a year.
I view.
Yeah, and that's with what's there, that's not with what, say, the controller's not sending, or people are, are done sending because it's costing a lot to get out.
Plus, they can digitize.
Yeah.
They're agreed more.
Plus they charge. Do you have a spreadsheet or something that breaks down like, like the controller's cost, mine cost?
I don't necessarily know we have a spreadsheet, but we have the actual invoices, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
It's broken down by office.
Yeah, it's broken down by office, so we could, we could grab some, we, we, we've pulled it before for this reason, because whenever we looked at the purchase of the building or, or how much it's going to cost, you know, when we sent to Cory, we necessarily did not want to purchase the building outright for all one lump sum. We didn't want to, you know, financing like Ms. Wolf said. So we were trying to see, like, if we were to purchase this building, is it similar in cost a year? And it's, it's, it's similar, yes, but, yeah, we could provide, we'd get some information. Any other questions for the solicitors' resolutions that would be listed tomorrow? All right, Board of Commissioners? Commissioner, man?
Um, we, we did have a, although you'd never know it from the local press, we did have a press conference Friday on our broadband initiative, very well done, very well put together by Michael Baker Engineering and Lance Grable and all of the I S P providers. And we've been able to hook up over two hundred homes now, and a lot more on, on, on the way. And Verizon is laying, I forget how many miles of new fiber.
The Philly and back, right? You said the Philadelphia and back, so.
Philly into, Philly to Lancaster.
Yeah.
Um, in, in Beaver County to upgrade the existing internet service there. It was a great, great conference, very well done. All of us were there, our state reps and the state senator were there as well. But just want to thank the folks for the great work that's taking place on, on broadband. Also, Monday, the E S U had a joint training exercise with Butler in Washington County at the Ice Arena and elsewhere in Beaver County. Great exercise, over a hundred folks involved with that to, to cross change a whole bunch of things from hostage rescue to all kinds of medic things, behavioral health negotiations, that kind of stuff. It was really neat thing, my congressional sense of Pat Young and the great work that the E S U does on, on that stuff. The only other thing I have is a job training from Beaver County had approached me a while back. They have an intern, summer intern program where youth can go on their payroll for six weeks and work for different organizations, nonprofit, in the life. So Rich Struthers, who runs the job training from Beaver County now, was asking if there were summer interns that we want for D P W or in the parks or actually in the parkinets that want to hire a youth intern. I don't think they place them, I think you can hire them, it just goes on their payroll because they have state funding through the Beaver, um, Beaver Washington Green Workforce Development Board funds there, so.
Southwest.
Southwest, yeah, so I don't know.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just wanted to add some context. It's, from what I understand, it goes up to the age of twenty-four. If they are eighteen and twenty-four, it pays fifteen dollars an hour. They are in like kind of an assistant position. Regular participants get paid ten dollars a day. If they are under eighteen, correct me, are in an assistant position, they get paid ten dollars and thirty-five cents an hour.
Yeah, so they go on their payroll, they're paid by them, they're also covered by their workers comp, should. Some of them, yeah, so just want to throw that out there and see.
There's absolutely a liability for accountable costs.
So, I just want to throw that out there. Writing them contractual issues, but, but, yeah, he, he brought it up to me again, and then I, I told him I'd get back to him, so. Anybody that's interested, at least at the county level, let us know, we'll put you in touch with Rich and see if we can arrange that. So, all right, I think that's it for me.
All right. Any other business, audience participation?
Hey, Ian Gray, my question for the listener, I wanted to hear a comment. Regarding the mail-in ballots, is there a plan for like advertising to voters in Beaver County? And do you include that slip in the mail-in ballots? I know we don't want to open the cameras, but is there a plan for what people know, like, how to, if you could, if you could just help?
So, so the plan right now is for individuals that, where the mail-in ballots are going out, there's going to be a notice put into the ballot packet that specifically says these two candidates, and, and we can get a copy, and we're going to put a copy on the website of, of what it shows. These two candidates, due to a court rolling after the ballots were printed, are no longer to be on the ballot. If you want to write in these candidates, I'm, I'm summarizing this. If you want to write in these candidates' names, vote for them, you would have to write them in, don't fill in the oval. We will have the same type of thing posted at all, at all the precincts on, on election day.
Okay, but is there any one on there? Do you see for any sort of, or do you need that?
Uh, if anyone from the media wants to run an article about the election, we will certainly, uh, mention that to them as well, too. But no, we don't plan on putting like a paid advertisement in, in the paper or anything like that. We're, we're going to try to get the word out as much as we can through, through sort of things like, like this. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If, if we were to put an ad out, it would almost look like a political ad for the two people that got kicked off the ballot.
Yeah, and, and again, the, the.
I'm not sure I want to draw any more attention to it.
The issue that we were, the issue that we were up against, if, if we didn't put them on the ballot, then we would have a ballot that didn't have two candidates that ultimately were rolled on. We thought the easier, the better way was to put them on, and we can always put language in pulling them off rather than trying to go back and figure out a way to put them on the ballot or, or craft a way to let people know that these people really should be on the ballot. So, so we, we thought this was the lesser of two evils. And unfortunately, what we've noticed here in the elections, the courts don't really always care about timing. Whenever they make rulings, when election stuff, it would have been nice to know, have this rolling two to three weeks ago. Unfortunately, it came down on Friday.
I appreciate that, there's a lot, a lot of consideration that goes around right now, but.
And as always, if anyone has any questions, stop by or contact the election department.
Thank you. Any other audience participation? Hearing that, oh, sorry.
Coria Wolf from Ohioville. First, I'd like to just say thank you for letting me speak. And I have no, this, this has nothing to do with anybody in particular, this has to do with the policy. The policy is for status of filing for property with a cemetery. We own a cemetery, it has been a cemetery. The state of Pennsylvania says a cemetery is not taxed. I have a paper here that says the class is exempt, but the status is taxable. Pennsylvania laws says that a cemetery is not taxed. And we're being taxed, we've been taxed since we bought it. Not knowing that you're supposed to file for tax exemption, the previous owners were in the same boat. I asked the assessment office this morning, yes, they have been paying taxes, and they have been paying taxes since the seventies. And that is an injustice, and that needs to be changed. Cemetery is a cemetery, I get it, if a church is purchased by an individual or something. It can be turned into a house, it can be turned into a dance hall, we turn it into a bingo parlor, whatever. Cemetery is a cemetery, and it's just injustice.
Did, did you guys recently acquire this, then?
We bought it in nineteen ninety-nine.
Oh, okay.
I've, I've asked questions about it, I guess it didn't ask the right people. Because why is a cemetery being taxed? I only found out recently that a cemetery is non-taxable. But the county of Beaver requires you to file for a status of non-taxable on cemetery.
So, so I can answer your question probably in more detail after, after the meeting, if you, if you want to. The short version of it is that whenever a property is purchased, regardless of whether it's taxable or tax exempt, once it's purchased, it goes back on the taxable list. And then at that point, if any individual wants to file an objection or exception to that, they have the right to do that. I can talk to you about that after the meeting.
I get that, I've heard that. But the state of Pennsylvania says a cemetery is not taxable.
Is that our, is that our policy, or is that the, the way the code is written, the tax code is written?
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's, that's the way it's written, I mean.
So even if, even if prior to you purchasing it, it wasn't taxed, when you, but even if it wasn't, and you purchased it, it was going to get taxed again, you have, by, by law.
It's, it's, it's on the property, it's the property owner who has to bring forward the request to make a tax, a property tax exempt.
You have a problem with that. A cemetery, a cemetery.
So the alternative to that would be every property would be tax exempt, and then the governing bodies then would have to prove which ones are taxable. I think that's what you're asking to do, then?
Well, what I'm saying is, Pennsylvania laws says that a cemetery is not taxed. Law claims they're not taxed.
And I don't disagree with that. It also says schools aren't taxed, but schools, whenever they go and they purchase a new piece of property, they have to go through that same exemption process that a cemetery would, or that potentially a hospital would.
That's because a school can be used for a different purpose. Cemetery is a cemetery, is a cemetery. What are you going to use them for?
Well, sometimes a cemetery might sit on multitude of acres, and maybe the whole portion of it isn't being used as a cemetery. I'm using a hypothetical, obviously, but, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but I can talk to people about the process.
I, I'm very convinced that something is an injustice, a cemetery is a cemetery. And I, we didn't know, I don't, I wonder, I'm, I'm kind of wondering how many of the cemeteries in the county have been being taxed, not even knowing, you know, the, the previous owner in the seventies purchased it, and they were being taxed according to the assessment office. But it's wrong. According to Pennsylvania laws, cemeteries are not taxed.
I'm just agree with that last part.
Thank you. Did you file the status?
I was informed that July first, I can do that. However, I still have to pay the taxes for this year. I've been paying the taxes for the past three or four years, and it's all right.
Thank you. Any other audience participation? Hearing that, all right, we will move into executive session.